All right, everyone. Good evening. I call the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole for June 2, 2021, to order. Since we just had a big moment of silence, we'll have another one. Whatever thoughts and concerns you have, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. If Alderman Dorman would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Brian, City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please. Dunn?
Here.
Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's viewing over any particular computer or electronic device. We certainly respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Just ask that, please, keep in mind you're talking to, as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with all of your fellow Davenporters, anybody in the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation, please, reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place for everyone. Especially folks in here, if you have your cellphone or whatever, if you'd please put it on silent or turn it off, just simply so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you wish to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to hear your name and address or warden. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, anything for tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have three public hearings tonight, two in community development, one in public works. Community development will be led by Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman, Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two public hearings in community development this evening. I open the public hearing for case REZ 21-03, being the request of built-to-suit on behalf of Elmore Storage LLC to rezone 6403 Elmore Avenue from CE Elmore Corners to C3 General Commercial District to allow for the expansion of the existing outdoor storage units. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Open the public hearing on the corrections for year 47 community development block grant funds. Anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Sorry, I missed you.
All right. That closes that public hearing and concludes the public hearings for community development. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Next area, public hearing is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead that. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG replenishment group two, East 7th Street and Leclerc Street reconstruction projects. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman. Next area is petitions and communications from everybody up here. So, just a reminder, I have a listening session at Eastern Iowa Library, Eastern Avenue Library at 5:30 tomorrow, and I appreciate also everybody that's called me and reached out concerning the task force we're setting up. I'm thankful for everybody participating, and so I just wanted to say that. Anyone else? So, Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, Tuesday, June 8, 6:30 PM, Duck Creek Park Lodge will be hosting a six-word meeting, and I'm happy to have John Vance, City's Arbors, there to provide a presentation and then have some great discussion afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. On the 100th anniversary of the Tulsa Race, Tulsa, Oklahoma Race Massacre, which was the Black Wall Street, that's the other name of that area, a very prosperous black business area, where they flattened 35 blocks and a lot of people were killed. On that, on that anniversary, I also want to say that there is going to be a webinar, free online webinar, called Race, Adolescence, and Trauma, on Tuesday, June 22 at noon, by Kristin Henning. She's a Bloom Professor of Law and Director of the Juvenile Justice Clinic and Initiative at Georgetown University Law Center in Washington, DC. It's sponsored by the Juvenile Justice Coalition of the Quad Cities, LULAC, Council 10, the Davenport NAACP, One Human Family QCA, Progressive Action for the Common Good, and the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of the Quad Cities. And there will be a follow-up on July 6 for identifying some actions that can be taken. So, there's a place where you can register, and I think if you just Googled "race adolescence and trauma," you can see how to sign up for that. And the other thing I wanted to say is, there's going to be a job fair at the River Center tomorrow for 10th and 12th grade students from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. There's going to be over 30 companies there that are looking to hire on the spot, interview and hire. So, if nothing else, it would give students a good chance to practice their interviewing skills, as well as potentially do something useful this summer and maybe earn a little money. So, again, that's tomorrow from 2:00 to 6:00 at the River Center. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp?
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a few things. First is, wearing my community development chair hat, I wanted to mention that the Urban Homestead Program is accepting applications now through June 30, 2021, for a home for sale within the Urban Homestead Program. The property is located at 503 West 15th Street. The property is fully rehabbed with all new modern finishes. For full details of the home and to print an application, you can go to the City of Davenport's website backslash Urban Homestead. If you prefer, you can also call the community development office at 563-326-7765 and ask for an application to be mailed to you. So, this is a program we do with federal funds through the City of Davenport, and it gets people into homeownership in our core neighborhoods. It's a good program. If you're interested, please contact the city. Then what I have after that is, you know, a bit of good news. So, this weekend, I had family in town from New York State, and they, because of COVID, it had been almost two years since they had been here. So, of course, when I have family and friends in town, I take them and show off our downtown and show off our riverfront. And my brother said, brother-in-law said, "Man, Davenport is a lot cooler than when I grew up here." And that is a great compliment, and so I wanted to celebrate that. Also, the riverfront looked really good. So, we ate at a couple places downtown, then we headed over to the Freight House for drinks and ice cream, and there was a wedding at the RME Courtyard. There were businesses set up in Quinlan Court. The farmers market was completely full with thousands of people there, and it was hard to find a place to sit and enjoy a beer on our newly remodeled deck at the Freight House. And that was really excellent to see. And I also wanted to specifically call out Steve Arons, the Director of the Riverfront Improvement Commission. Every time I am at the Freight House, Steve Arons is also at the Freight House. He puts a ton of time and hours and effort into the Freight House, the riverfront, our city. Obviously, everyone knows he used to be an alderman, now he's worked for the city specifically with the Riverfront Improvement Commission. But he just, he believes in Davenport, he does great things for it, and we're seeing the fruits of his efforts among many. And then the other, the last thing I wanted to mention is, it had been too long since I had last taken my children on the Sky Bridge, and I'm sad to say that one of my kids is getting to the point where he's kind of like, he's over it. But the other three were still really excited to go to the Sky Bridge. So, the Sky Bridge is back open. It had been closed due to COVID, but it is open, and it is ready for you to go down to the riverfront and remember how beautiful it is. Back to you. Thanks, Mayor.
Outstanding. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, and the city announces today that due to staffing issues this year, probably connected to people having other jobs and also perhaps COVID and not knowing what was going to happen, there will only be two Davenport City pools open out of three this year, but they are going to be open, and they will be Annie Witt and Fejuary Pool, June 12 through August 22. There's Open Swim, Tuesday, Thursday, and Sunday at Annie Witt from 1:00 to 7:00, and Monday, Wednesday, Saturday from 1:00 to 7:00 at Fejuary. And the Learn to Swim Program will continue to be offered Monday through Thursday at both of those with half capacity. So, you know, we would love to have all the pools open, but there were, they really couldn't find lifeguards to protect the people who were there, and so this is what will happen this year, and it's certainly better than last year. Of course, the spray parks are all always available, and they're open through Labor Day. So, you can find out all this information, the schedules, at www.davenportiowa.com/pools. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Anyone else? So, just one alibi, music, RME, Live at 5, this Friday starts, big crowd, big band. I love going there, so there's something else going on. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else? Okay, so, we have four areas of discussion, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will do that. Those items, Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ORD 21-01, amending various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled zoning. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-02, being the request of Belser Ventures LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone 1320 West Kimberly Road, containing 5.37 acres, more or less, from C2 Corridor Commercial to C3 General Commercial District to allow heavy retail of commercial electronic components. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 21-03, being the request of built-to-suit on behalf of Elmore Storage LLC to rezone 6403 Elmore Avenue from CE Elmore Corners to C3 General Commercial District to allow for the expansion of the existing storage units. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving case P21-01, being the request of Dan Dolan Holmes on behalf of Sophie Foster Revocable Trust for a preliminary plat of Birchwood Grove for a 73-lot subdivision on 20 acres located at 4607 East 53rd Street. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? So, I will say, obviously, we just went through the rezoning process with this property, and looking at the preliminary plat, it looks very similar, no major changes to it. I guess one question for staff is, can we expect to see any other changes before the final plat comes through? If you could just walk us through that process, please.
Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services. There will be a few changes as listed in the conditions attached to that preliminary plat, the largest being that currently our zoning ordinance for the residential multifamily doesn't allow a building to cross lot lines. So, the major change will be, it will be the condo buildings on the north side of the street will be one lot instead of multiple lots, so the lot number will actually go down.
Do we have a timeline for when the final plat is expected to come through?
7:22.
7:22.
Okay. See, you have this summer?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving case P21-02, being the request of S.J. Russell LC on behalf of Sophie Foster Revocable Trust for a preliminary plat of Birchwood South First Edition for an 11-lot subdivision on 17.92 acres located at 4607 East 53rd Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And item number six is a motion approving the corrections for year 47 community development block grant funds. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you much, very much. Chairman Gripp, I move that the first three items be placed on the discussion agenda, 1, 2, and 3, and that items 4, 5, and 6 be placed on the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Your Honor, that concludes community development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman Lee. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will lead that. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items under public safety. For item one, I will read all these, then ask for public and council comment. Item number one is resolution approving street lane or public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. Humility Homes and Services, open house and community block party, 519 Fillmore Street, Saturday, June 26, 2021, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Closure, Fillmore Street from West 6th Street, south to just north of the alley. Corn Belt Running Club, BIC 7 events, Brady Street Sprints, Thursday, July 22, 2021, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Closure, Brady Street from 5th Street to 11th Street. Junior BIC 7, Friday, July 23, 2021, 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Closures, East 4th and East 3rd Streets from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, Iowa and Leclerc Streets from East 3rd to East 4th Streets. Then Village of East Davenport Business Association, Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, August 21, 2021, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Closures, East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street, north to the alley, Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street, north to the alley. And then Davenport Community School District, state marching band competition, Brady Street Stadium, 3603 Brady Street, Saturday, October 16, 2021, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Closure, East 36th Street between Brady Street and Davenport Avenue. Are there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Mayor Mattson?
And you have, you have Alderman Gripp. Oh, now you have a bunch. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee.
Sorry. Alderman Gripp?
I just wanted to say, I don't think I could have gone another year without the BICS.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, and I reinforce what Alderman Gripp just said. Why is everyone calling you Alderwoman tonight? That's twice. Yeah, that's bad. And also, I want to say that Bob and I walked the Quick BICS the other day and did a 17-minute mile, and that was purely my fault it was that slow, so I'm going to be doing some of the practices in between, because we will be doing the Quick BICS this year. Thank you.
I just want to say, great that these are all back also. It's so cool to have everything back going. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then for item two, again, we'll read, read the items under and ask for comment. So, item number two, motion approving noise variance requests for events on the listed dates and times. Ed Hillibrand, Neighborhood Party, 834 North Pine Street, Saturday, June 12, 2021, 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, outdoor band music over 50 dB. And Village of East Davenport Business Association, Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, Saturday, August 14, 2021, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, outdoor music over 15, or, excuse me, over 50 dB. Anybody from the public? Anyone from council? Then we'll move on to the last item, number three. I will read the new licenses, but then the annual license renewals are listed there for everyone's review. So, item three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer. Front Street Brewery, Quinlan Court, Mercado in El Rio, June 12, July 10, August 14, September 11, and October 9, 2021, outdoor area, license type, special Class C liquor. And Zeeks Island Cafe, 131 West 2nd Street, license type, Class C liquor. Anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Mr. Mayor?
Nice to see Zeeks back in by the RME. I just, thank you.
Then I'd ask Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman. Next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will lead that. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 10 items this evening for public works. Item number one is a resolution approving the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan for Davenport City Bus as required by the Federal Transit Administration. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CDBG replenishment group two, East 7th Street and Leclerc Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution awarding the contract for the Emerald Drive Reconstruction Project, Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $499,302.75. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for the 2021 alley resurfacing program, West 15th Street and Iowa Street alleys, Tim and Atz Incorporated of Eastern Iowa Division of Comanche, Iowa, in the amount of $132,655. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of Road Salt for the 2021-2022 winter season, the Compass Materials American Incorporated of Wolverland Park, Kansas, in the amount of $571,372.50 for the base purchase and $199,100 for a supplement order. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding the contract for the traffic signalization at Hickory Grove Road and Central Park Avenue to Davenport Electric Contract Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $254,300. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the Hickory Grove Road Resurfacing Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $452,430. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion accepting work completed by AmeriCorps LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa, for the Kelly Subdrain Installation in the amount of $57,536.20. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. I just have to provide notification that I will be abstaining from any votes related to item number eight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion considering a waiver of sidewalk installation for the Mid American Energy Davenport Service Center located at 9,005 Hillendale Road. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. Just a quick question. This is a temporary deferral. Are there any other sidewalks in this particular area?
Public Works, Branch Head, there are no other sidewalks in this area. There have been several other waivers as well. As part of this, we have asked that the grade be placed so that sidewalk can be installed later.
And I was just notified that I should really have known about this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a motion awarding the contract for the construction-related services for the Marquette Street, Paul Street to 5th Street Reconstruction Project, Vinsstra and Kim Incorporated in Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $90,396. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all 10 items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes public works for this evening, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. All right. The last item is finance. No pressure on Alderman Condon and himself, and now I'll talk to our good friend Alderman Miller to help out. So, finance, Alderman Condon, please.
All right. We have one item on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the adoption of amended and restated policies and procedures regarding municipal securities disclosure. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Item will move on. Next here on the finance agenda, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We do not read each of those out loud, but they're listed here for your information. Alderman Miller, would you please set the agenda?
I would like to recommend all of these items for consent, for consent track, whatever you call it.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, yes.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That will conclude finance.
Thank you, everyone. So, then we move to, are there any other ordinance resolutions or motions? There are none for this evening. And then we move to, are there any public with business? If there are, please come to the podium. Please give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Good to see everyone again. Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also 1514 West High Street here in Davenport, since 1957 on 1514 West High Street. Just a couple things I wanted to talk about, and always, the riverfront and downtown Davenport are top in my mind, and just very briefly, just this afternoon, my girlfriend and I went down to Dudaz over on West 3rd, a very charming institution. We got a mid-century coffee table for the house there, and great. It leads me to recall how so much of the historic buildings in downtown Davenport, such as the Dudaz currently is, so many of those were lost in the '60s, '70s, '80s, up until today, and had those been retained, I think we'd have a much more vibrant and charming downtown. Nothing to be done about that now, but we need to make sure that we retain all the historic and old buildings that we currently have. In particular, I'm drawn to the area from Gaines Street to, let's say, to Marquette, maybe even farther, all the way maybe to Division Street. There's a very large block there of historic buildings that I think underused, it's kind of a night, kind of scary-looking area, but after my recent, our recent trip to Pittsburgh, the, what's called the strip district in Pittsburgh, which is a commercial area that kind of fell on hard times, if the city had, over a period of years, nurtured a revitalization of that, it's now the most, one of the most vital areas other than the downtown in Pittsburgh. I think that area between Gaines and Marquette, I think it's something that could be, we could find a very similar thing happening in Davenport if we actually play our cards right. The property values are low, the potential is high. Young Architecture Firm that was on, Streamline Architects, that was over on West East 3rd, you know, they moved out of there, went to East Bolin, because they didn't feel that there was anything comparable to what they ended up with East Bolin in Davenport. I think probably that's true, but I don't think it has to always be that way. So, I think the city needs to maybe, you know, perhaps with the downtown partnership, come up with some type of a listing and perhaps a plan to stabilize, revitalize, and if people knew that area is something that could possibly be a future, have a great future for the city, I think people would be more willing to invest money, and they're not, I don't see that right now. And I guess the last thing, talking about the Sky Bridge, and, yeah, it's been, I don't remember, 16, maybe 16 years this summer, I think, it opened. I remember going on the Sky Bridge probably like 25 times in a row, from one end to the other, and going up and down the elevator, and I just couldn't believe it. But, you know, at that point, you know, I think the idea about the bridge to nowhere, I don't think that meme existed. I think that was pre-Sarah Palin. But it was a bridge to nowhere, and I think we need to, as a city, look at a building at the end of that, and perhaps something, a higher, a higher version of what you see in the farmer's market. We've got, the Freight House, where you've got a great view of the river, you've got a place you can sit out in the sun, enjoy the river. And I think a sense of this, from the city, that any building there not be owned by a developer. It's, the city owns that park. They spent all the money for the Sky Bridge, and I think it would be the worst thing possible for that building to be rented or leased to a developer. I think the city needs to maintain, maintain that building. I think the worst thing would be to, because it's, the city has spent millions and millions and millions of dollars for that. And as I said to the Riverfront Commission last, earlier this month, last month, a building could be put there for somewhere around $10 million. Russell Construction told me that. And if the lease, the rental could pay for about half of that, then the city's fortune would only be about $5 million. That's not much more than the $3 million we spent for the flex space on River Drive. So that's all I have today. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
A motion and a second. All in favor, to adjourn.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a safe weekend.